To our flag in our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Action on our agenda. Do you know any changes, Mr. Norman?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay. You know what to do, folks.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Karen, to approve our agenda as you see it. Any discussion? If not, all say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The agenda is approved. Action on the minutes. Which you all have.
Um, one, I have one correction.
Okay.
Um, on the section where there was an amendment to a motion by my peers.
Mm-hmm.
My recollection, if it serves me correctly, I was the one that seconded it. As opposed to Tom.
Yeah. Was that? Okay.
It's not a big thing, but.
I don't know.
Yeah, right, Kim was here. I think that's also true, so can we amend them in that fashion?
Okay.
It's not a big deal, but, you know, it's official record.
Yep. Nope, that's fine. We'll get that corrected.
And then, Mr. President.
And I might have miscalled that too, so if that's the case, I apologize, so.
And then the other correction that needs to be done is I was not present at the last meeting. And I was missing.
Oh, it does say absent from on, doesn't it? Okay.
Spending time with my family.
You folks are paying attention.
I missed one meeting and you let it call the party down.
Okay. With those corrections, are there anything else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as corrected.
That's a move.
Thank you.
Play. I'm meeting.
We're gonna have to get flashcards here.
Who seconded?
Uh, Rick. A motion from Mike, seconded by Rick, to approve the minutes as corrected. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is challenging your folks. Vouchers are next up.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Funds 10 vouchers totaling $999,609.63 and Building Fund 49 vouchers totaling $375,037.37 as presented.
Seconded.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Karen, to approve the vouchers as you just outlined. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The vouchers are good. Public participation. Uh, I don't believe anyone signed the additional sheet back there in the original one we picked up. Uh, we do have one of our constituents and former colleagues, I must add. Uh, Don Bruin is gonna address us on, it says legislative update, so. Don can help us understand what goes on north of here.
Okay. Thank you guys for having me. Well, we've got my voice out behind us, so. If I come in just briefly and hear about some of the things that are going on in the legislature. We recently adjourned the Assembly, but the Senate is still in session yet, and I'm not sure what day. Just to make you aware of some of the things going on. One of the bills that concerned me to me that was introduced was the teacher. Oh, okay. Is the teacher retirement bill that was introduced, which would change the retirement age to 59 and a half. And the reason that bill came forward is that rural districts throughout Wisconsin, I have a hard time getting teachers to come to the rural areas and there's simply a shortage. We're down about 30% of the teacher colleges right now. So the idea would be that they, that a teacher could retire at 56 or at 59 and could still work three years and get their pension in order to, and so when they're retiring in these northern districts or these small districts, they could still continue to work for 36 months and draw their pension. Now, I, you know, I taught until I was 59. I don't think, I hear from teachers, uh, they like the 55-year-old retirement age, health reasons, uh, many other reasons. I think it's gonna be tougher for people to teach 30 years now, so. Expect that bill to come back again next session, uh, because, because again, we have a hard time attracting teachers. Uh, some other legislation that came forward was the cursive mandate, uh, that was introduced and it was passed in the Assembly. I don't think the Senate's gonna take it up because there was a $6 million, $6 million release tag attached to it. About two-thirds of our, of our schools teach cursive anyway. Um, another, another bill we expanded, that passed the Assembly, um, expanding part-time open enrollment, which is going to allow someone from, expanded it from kindergarten through high school. Uh, a student can take, now this has to pass the Senate, but it passed the Assembly. Uh, that students can take up to two classes in another district if they want to, so then. So I don't know what the Senate's gonna do with that, but, um, it passed by, uh, it wasn't bipartisan support. Another bill is the Holocaust education. I didn't know we stopped teaching the Holocaust. Because I always taught the Holocaust. I think, Rick, you, I taught in the Holocaust. Uh, but apparently that's something that's going to come, that's, that's being reintroduced again along with Indian education. It was interesting, we got five, six bills on teaching Native American, uh, which is something I thought was mandated as well, but apparently since I retired, things have changed, but, uh, it's coming back. But interesting with the, with Indian education was that there were six bills. And we had 603, 604, 605, up to 608, but 607 was missing. And that was the bill that was mandated Indian education in private schools and in voucher schools. Just in the public schools, it was gonna be mandated to be taught. And so, um, again, that didn't, that didn't come up for vote, but it's gonna come back again next session, I can tell. Also, there's a bill that requires all the school districts to report, all retiring, you know, restraining, seclude a student and restrain a student. And so, that's gonna go to the Senate yet, but that passed, passed the Assembly as well. There was also, um, we passed a bill that is going to create a pilot program for mental health in Alagay in, uh, Alagay County. And part of that was because of, and I'll talk about this in a bit, but, uh, the governor, um, had a special session on, to handle his education package with the surplus that we're gonna have in there. He included quite a bit of substantial funds for mental health and so, but we never got the session because it was gaveling and gavel out, so we couldn't have, so we couldn't have the conversation. So that's why there was a bill introduced to have a pilot program because the, says we need to have it, because the people who do this, we need to have evidence-based, uh, in order to prove that we need to rent the health services, which, um, I can tell you, in the schools I've been in, uh, the rent of health services are needed now. And we can't wait. And so let me, let me talk. The big debate in the Assembly is tax cut versus more money for schools. And, of course, the governor needed the tax cut and the money for schools, we didn't have the discussion. So I suspect next, when we get, after reelection, uh, next year is gonna be a big discussion. What do we do with that money? But let me tell you, the governor's package would have given, um, almost $600,000 in, in aids to the Walton School District and have given you $260,000, $260,000 of dollars for special education. What people don't realize in Wisconsin is that we, that public schools spend a billion dollars a year on special education that they don't get funded for. It takes money out of the classroom. The governor's proposing was to give, was to give 34%. We upped the budget to 30%, and we're giving 34%. So we've given every school district a little money to hire the, the special people that they needed and, and they certainly need it because 52% of special ed teachers in Wisconsin are in special licenses. And so, because they can't find them. And so certainly we need to get help in there. Um, also, if you've got a one-on-one student in your district, we need to have someone who just watches that one student. The governor had $5 million for districts to apply. If they could prove that a one-on-one student needed to get help for that one-on-one student, which, which didn't come about. One of the things they wanted to do, first of all, let's give them a history. 1994. In 1994, Governor Thompson was governor, now somebody might remember that. But I was teaching at the day and Governor Thompson proposed three things. Revenue caps, revenue limits for the school districts, two-thirds funding by the state, and the Q E O. I think the teachers ought to remember the Q E O. We don't have the Q E O anymore, but we do have limits on how much raises we can give. We don't have the two-thirds funding anymore, but we have the revenue limits. And the revenue limits are straining school districts all across the state. Where I grew up in central Wisconsin, Edgar said they don't pass it off for him in April. They don't know if they can stay up until next fall. Your courses on the same route, we saw what happened with Penney Eagle. Even though that, uh, they were given a lot of real life, but Penney Eagle cannot, if they can't pass it off for him, they're not gonna survive. They just can't. And Kelly Marine, we heard the testimony from Penney Eagle, said, "In two years, if they can't pass it off for him, they're gonna be in the same situation." And so, the revenue limits are hurting schools. And so, this is why the governor proposed this funding for schools, because there are a lot of schools in need that aren't gonna stay open unless they can pass it off for him. And we made that tougher for you because you can't, if one fails, uh, you can't go back one way. You have to wait a year before you can go back. And so it doesn't address the needs. So, the, um, and, and to be fair, the tax cuts that, that, um, the Republicans introduced, actually were very good tax cuts. It was a middle-class tax cut. But the problem with that is that it would have created a deficit almost immediately because it would rework the, the tax brackets so that the next year, we wouldn't have a surplus. And the surplus would be gone and we actually had less funding. So that's why it wasn't something you could vote for. There were some things that I thought were good policy, like, like, um, personal property tax break for businesses that I think that we need, but we, the problem we have in the legislature is that we can't talk to each other. See, the one side or the other. And that's what makes it difficult. We could, we could have something available and as well, we didn't get anything, so hopefully, with this next election, we can look around, maybe we can have something, um, that both sides could live with. So I can go on, but you have a lot of people here that we, that we have to honor tonight, so I'm gonna leave you go with that. So, any questions?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On the retirement for the teachers, do they have to retire at 59 or they, can they still retire at 55?
No, they have to retire at 59.
But then administrators would be 55, right? Or they'd be 50?
I, it's a teacher retirement bill. It's nothing to do with the administrators.
Well, people retire at 55 and all.
Yeah. So that, that's, that's the hangup. And so, all the teachers I talked to, they didn't have a support for that.
You can answer another quick question before you go. Um, that personal open enrollment, how does that affect our funding? Do you know?
Um, well, it hasn't, we haven't, we haven't seen it yet. It, it was introduced in the Assembly. It passed the Assembly. It has to get in through the Senate. So I haven't seen the numbers and how it affects, um, how, you know, what's gonna affect, what kind of aid you get for it. I'm just knowing that the Assembly passed.
Do you think there's a likelihood that it'll pass in the Assembly?
I, I don't think so, the Senate, well, I shouldn't say that. Um, the concern I have going into next year is that the head of the Education Committee in the Senate is retiring. And he has been a good champion of the public schools. He's prevented voucher schools from expanding faster than they have. And right now, we have to look at how we get state aid first. You take off the money from the voucher schools, which is $353 million, then, then the charter schools, and then the public schools. So, um, I could give you the Assembly that a lot more, but we can talk about that later on. So, so I'm afraid that in 2026, the limit for vouchers is going away. And anybody can be eligible. And I don't know what it's gonna do for public schools, so. So I'm a little concerned what's gonna happen down the road when that limit goes away. Who can, who can attend voucher schools? Because right now, they get, voucher schools get between $8,000 and $8,900 from, from grade school to, um, high school. That amount, where the public schools get about $5,000 per student. So they get less. And so, um, that's concerning to me. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ruink. Uh, that was the only public participation speaker, so we'll go on to Student Council Report. Ms. McHalen.
All right. So we're talking about a field trip for Student Council. And then we have Career Day on Wednesday, and we're gonna help with getting all the leaders to, and we try to make sure that's wonderful. And then we have a Downstream Hermor awareness of Rock Your Socks. It's March 20th. And we're just getting on some advertising for that so that we can get some support. And then we also have a volleyball tournament on March 12th that's sponsored by Student Council.
Very good. Any questions from our student rep? We'll roll on. Building and department announcements.
Good evening. In the K-3 world, we just came off of a week of celebrating Read Across America. So each of our schools did something somewhat unique, but yet all united around celebrating reading. Many of the schools in our level had spirit days where the students dressed up with Dr. Seuss-themed dress-up days. We had reading activities both during the school day and some schools had family reading celebrations in the nighttime as well. So, big week for our K-3 schools last week. We're also excited to celebrate our students in the interpretive reading program, which is going on now. And the finals will be coming up soon. And so those students have an opportunity to get up and read in front of their peers, which prepares them to be good public speakers, like our Student Council rep here. And it all starts really when they're very young in first grade. So it's a great opportunity for our students. We like to thank, we have many community members who serve as judges. And thank Amy Murdis for organizing that for our students. Finally, this is state testing season. So for our K-3 schools, our third graders are the only grade who's take the Wisconsin Forward test. So I'd like to give a shout-out to all of our Student Services team members, our counselors and psychologists, as well as our third grade staff especially, as well as our special education staff. Everybody really has to work together. Our tech department is doing a lot of behind-the-scenes things to get things rolling. We do our practice testing next week and the testing right after spring break.
All right, good evening. At the Middle School in Relationship Climate and Culture, we are super excited for our talent show this Friday, Friday the 13th, by the way. Um, where we have 20 of our brave and courageous middle school students who will be performing a variety of talent show acts in the form of an all-school assembly. So that's in front of 600 students and staff, which takes a lot of courage for a 12- or 13-year-old to do, so we're super excited about that. Um, March 16th through the 20th, the last week before spring break, is our Choose to Include campaign, which is sponsored by our Unity team. Uh, we will have a variety of activities that week focused on diversity and inclusion. Uh, the kickoff to that week is the UW Whitewater wheelchair basketball team. Will be performing an assembly for our school on the 16th, so we're very excited about that. Um, last in the area of teaching and learning, um, Mr. Winsky, myself, some other middle school staff in collaboration with Mayor's staff, um, have identified, um, 50-plus students to interview for our Abbott elective for next year. Mr. Hoffman actually helped us with our interviews this year as well, who's in the, in the crowd today. Um, some of those interviewees are behind me right now. So they did a magnificent job. Um, some decisions ahead for the middle school staff in figuring, figuring out who will come into that Abbott elective, but we're very excited about the expansion of Abbott elective into seventh and eighth grade for next year.
Good evening. A quick update on athletics. But first, afterwards, maybe you can ask Don about the, what the private schools or the legislature likes about public schools. They do like that we have athletics. And they are wanting their virtual school students now to participate. And I don't know where that's at, but I'm not going to surrender the mic to Don because I've known him for four, over 40 years and this meeting will not get over. Saturday, we, we wrapped up the winter sports season, um, with the girls' individual state gymnastics. We had two girls participating. Uh, last meeting, you know, you approved the co-op, Edgerton and Milton, and, um, we had one Milton girl and one Edgerton girl, uh, individual state. Uh, however, our team did qualify. So on Friday, I had the, uh, great opportunity to go up to Wisconsin Rapids and watch our, our girls do, uh, compete in Division One, and they got sixth in the state in Division One gymnastics as a team. So I'm very proud of that group of kids. Uh, a lot of smiles and, uh, very happy parents, you know, when their kids are doing well, that's when they're the happiest. So, um, it was, it was a great day up there for our gymnastics. So again, thank you for approving that co-op. They can't imagine their team without each other, the two schools. Um, our wrestling team had four individuals qualify for the individual state tournament. See, uh, boys and girls basketball are both, uh, one-and-doners this year in the, in the playoffs. The girls lost to a Waukesha West team that was defeated in the sectional finals. Um, and, um, good enough to know that they were beaten by Oregon, one of our conference foes. So, I mean, they, it was a tough, tough road to hold, no matter which way they went, so. Um, uh, and the boys also went to the Southern Lakes and, uh, and lost a good battle, but they had a very good year as well. Um, so we've had some real good success. Uh, girls hockey, I forgot to mention that. Girls hockey, our co-op with Beloit, which I'll be coming back to talk to you about later, uh, lost in the state semifinals last Thursday night. And that was another, another really good game and a great experience. And, uh, they had a huge crowd from, uh, from the Rock County Fury. A lot of Milton people there watching. Uh, so, yeah, it's been a really good, really good winter of sports. Um, today was the first day of track practice. So they're lining the fields tomorrow for, for soccer and baseball and softball, I'm sure. Uh, so we can't wait to get outside. Maybe it's a little drier. So, thank you.
All right. And the other doings at the high school. A week ago, we had a number of students, both in instrument and vocal, uh, music departments, uh, that competed in the solo ensemble contest. Uh, they did an amazing job. And actually, in the band, actually, the, uh, while we had lots of solos and small groups, uh, they also had, uh, each of the actual sub, uh, instrument areas had their large group performance. And that's made a lot of their efforts. And five of the six groups qualified for state, which is, it was almost a clean sweep, which is pretty remarkable. So we're very proud of the work that all the students did with that. Uh, this last week, we did complete the ACT test, ACT testing, uh, very successfully. That was, um, so every junior, again, took the ACT this last week. Uh, coming up here, or some things that we have moving forward with now, we have, almost all the course requests are in, so we're in the process of scheduling, uh, the trimester. We have lots of, uh, staff and students eager to see how that is going to work out as we put together the schedule for next year. It's kind of a, a new puzzle that we get to put together. Uh, and as was mentioned, the Career Day is this Wednesday. We have, uh, over 80, uh, different community members who are going to be coming into the building to, to help with that. I did share that last time, but that's this Wednesday, uh, morning. Uh, we get started at 8:00 a.m. Uh, we have band concert tomorrow. Uh, and then on March 19th, uh, just in the area of some things in the classroom, actually, training that we have with our special education department, our math teachers. We have some, uh, a specialist coming in to work with our math teachers and special education department and co-teaching, uh, to groups, one going in the morning, one going in the afternoon, taking a look at how we can better serve our students, uh, in the, at the classroom level. So our special ed and math teachers working together to look at ways that they can work with a co-teaching, uh, environment.
Very good. Okay, thank you. And those of you paying attention will know that we skipped a building. But that was not an oversight. That was unintentionally. In our continuing saga, or series, if you will, to, uh, highlight or school spotlight, uh, all the good things happening at our different buildings and whatnot, uh, we've made our way through the elementaries and in sequential fashion, we are up to Northside Intermediate. So I will welcome Mr. Ryan and the many, many folks that he brought with him tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, and the rest of the Board of Education for this opportunity to celebrate Northside Intermediate School with the board and the public. Before we get started with our presentation today, I do want to give a shout-out to our teachers who are in the background there. Uh, we have ident-dynamic staff at Northside and committed educators. Uh, they really do their best every day to make sure that kids have a great experience in their school and they are tireless in their commitment, um, to help kids. So please round of applause for our Northside teachers. Next, as we begin to dive into our presentation, I have a little bit of help for this. And I had quite a few student leaders in their school. So I'd like to do, kid, if you could introduce yourself and maybe make sure the classroom, if you're involved in a club or activity. Okay?
My name is Haley Bilkey. I'm the treasurer, um, the secretary of Student Council, and I run the newsletter too.
My name is Tate Olson. I'm from Mrs. Weigl's class, and I'm the president of Student Council.
My name is Soya Carr. I'm in Miss Berry Fraser's class, and I'm the treasurer of Student Council.
Hi, I'm Ben Nelson, and I'm in Student Council. I do newsletter too.
My name's Lily Miss Group. I'm in Mrs. Lashin's class, and I'm student council and newsletter.
My name's Ava Orowski. I'm in Mrs. Weigl's class, and I guess I'm just student council.
So the students and I have been working on this for the last two weeks. We practiced on Friday and yet today, and each time it's gotten a little bit better. So we'll go ahead and dive into our presentation if we could. And Mrs. Musgrove and I are gonna start, and we're gonna turn over to the students. So we want to start first in talking about the history of our school. Um, so Northside Intermediate School was built in response to overcrowding concerns at the middle school as well as a growing elementary schools. Um, it was a second attempt in passing a capital referendum in our school community. And interestingly enough, it only passed by 70 votes back in 1991. It was open in 1993. Um, the cost of that operational referendum was just shy of $5 million. So I'm not an excellent mathematician, but I think that puts in about $50 a square foot to build that new building for our school district, which I think has been a fantastic investment. Um, and it was the first new construction for the district since the high school back in 1965. Uh, the first school year was '93, and it changed our configuration in our schools. Where sixth graders are now out of the middle school and are joining us at Northside to ease some of those overcrowding concerns. And then east-west and consolidated became K-3 neighborhood schools. Prior to that, they hosted students all the way up to fifth grade. That photo there, you'll notice Superintendent Platts on the left, Principal Bloom there on the right, and then School Board President Mulaney were part of that groundbreaking ceremony. It doesn't look all that much different than the groundbreaking ceremony that we had just a little while ago with some of our students over at Milton East.
And this is a picture of the groundbreaking, and it happened in June of 1992.
Back before all the houses on Sunset Drive and everything else. That's the first day of school there. That's Principal Bloom greeting students on the very first day in September 1993. Um, at the time, I believe it was around 650 students at Northside. Uh, we'd been as high as 780 students over the last 25 years. Slide please.
This is a picture of the first year. The students, uh, made a time capsule. And that time capsule is actually in when you first walk into the entryway in the foyer. Um, last year, we actually opened up the time capsule and shared all the materials that were in there um, as a end-of-the-year ceremony of assembly. We invited community members along with, um, students from the past who came. And we had about 30 P, 30 students, previous students who came actually to the end-of-the-year assembly. Now, we did repack it with new updated information about Northside, and we did put it back in.
Interestingly enough, there were lots of notes about the big gym at Northside from students in 1993 because Northside's gym is enormous compared to some of our primary schools. And the carpet was something that was really unique about our school. That, no, I mean, it was controversial at the time that there was carpet at Northside, so. Um, this is kind of the 3,000-foot view of Northside. This is the mid-'90s. Uh, one of the things that we learned through that time capsule celebration that we had last year is that the first year at Northside, they didn't have any playground equipment. So the kids went outside and I guess stared at each other for a while, so it was interesting. Um, so this is like the mid-'90s, um, back when the construction was happening there on Sunset. You notice, um, Northside looks like a stick man, right? The head there is the gym, and the arms are each a grade level wing in the front office area there in the middle of our school.
Next slide. So our population is about seven years students, our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. We have about 98 staff members who help run our building. There's 10 sections of each grade level. Our school is broken into wings by grade level. Uh, we have teaching pairs. One teacher teaches reading and writing, while the other one teaches math, science, and social studies. And we are really committed to an inclusive school community for all. Um, on the right side, you see some school information. Our demographics are, are changing in Milton overall. Uh, but especially at Northside, when we're looking at our students, um, families with economically disadvantage is increasing every year.
So achievement at Northside. Uh, Northside is an excellent school. Uh, we are a four-star school according to the EPI's Accountability Report Card. We scored a 76.6 last school year. And we are well above the state averages for reading and math achievement. Our math achievement actually went up a little bit from the previous year. Our ERI achievement dipped just a little bit, um, but so did the state average. Uh, one area that we really want to grow and improve in is our English Language Arts instruction. And the staff have been working really hard at that. Um, and we're in the middle of a new curriculum implementation that is definitely a part of it. So we hope to see those scores rise over time. Uh, and we'd like to be a five-star school because we know our staff and students are certainly capable of it. The other piece that we want to work on is that closing the gaps measure, again, specifically in the area of English Language Arts. So the students and I brainstormed. We got together, I mean, brainstormed a couple of weeks ago, all the different opportunities that we could come up with at Northside. There's quite less, as you can see. And we're not gonna share all of them, but the students selected a few that they wanted to highlight from the students' perspective to share with the board and the community. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Haley.
One of the opportunities I chose to highlight was rec night. It is a sixth-grade-only event with pizza, karaoke, basketball, a photo booth, dancing. It is twice a year. Student Council works. Student council works the conventions. All money goes to the Kalahari trip at the end of the year, and you get in for that for five dollars.
Money Unit is a good opportunity for kids to learn how to use money wisely, so when it's time to get a job, people don't waste all their money right away. Money Unit teaches kids how to be responsible. You learn how to use checks, and on market day, you sell home goods and services. Students create a business plan and just based on each market day. And in the pictures on the right, those are some of the market day, people were selling stuff. Yeah.
Morning opportunity times are full of great opportunities. Some of them include mindful mornings, where we listen to sounds and calm down before the day, band and choir practices before school, tutoring and homework club are also before school with Milton High School juniors and seniors, reading and math support for students, and social emotional learning supports. Thank you.
The final opportunity I chose to highlight was Delta Kappa Gamma and anthology. Delta Kappa Gamma is a writing contest similar to anthology, but instead of a page limit, you have a word limit of one thousand words. You also have to draw a picture, bind your story's pages, and you are judged on your creativity of your drawing, binding, and cover. You are also judged on your story flow, structure, lead, and the ending. And the judging for that was on March sixth. Anthology, there's a theme every year. This last year was Beneath the Surface. There's finalists, which their work is maybe going to be published there on the list, and publishers, where their work was published in their official book. There's a page limit of two pages, and the criticals you can choose from are art, prose, illustrated writing, poetry, and cartoon.
Lego Robotics teaches students how to use technology with Legos. Students can bond with the other students and teachers, creating robots.
Lego Robotics helps students learn how to work together and use social skills. Students can use their coding skills and creativity to show off their work using robots.
Mix it up at lunch is a mix, pun intended, of opportunity and community. It's organized by student council. They hand out cards to all the kids, and they go sit with new people. The cards have little jokes on them. What's a pirate's favorite letter? Rrr. The goal of this lunch is to encourage kids to make new friends.
Okay, well, we were challenged to do some interviewing, and we had to ask students the question, what opportunities would you tell future Northside about? One of my favorites is from Natalie and Julia in Mrs. Jane's Room. Lots of field trips, girls who code, girls on the run, very fun.
From Annie and Riley from Miss Fanning's Room, lunch with the cop is fun, a good way to teach to learn how to stop bullying.
So, the next part of our presentation is we really wanted to focus on what community and culture is all about in our schools. We had different group of students who really looked at that. So, we engaged in a similar process. We brainstormed all the different things that would relate to community and culture. We decided to share a few with the board and public tonight.
Students at Northside meet up for an EL holiday luncheon. EL stands for English Language, and EL is for students who have learned or have been learning English as a second language. Families bring in food that represents their country, such as tamale, sesame chicken, egg rolls, kimchi, fried rice, and chips and salsa. I got the opportunity to go to the luncheon this year, where I learned more about, yeah, more about families, cultures, in our community. Also, students shared their presentations with their families about their country. Community members were invited to attend the celebration, and it's a great way to promote diversity in our community. Hawk Hill is a great way to build our school community. Hawk Hill is when a group of select people from different grades gather together and do fun educational activities. There's a mix of fourth graders, fifth, and sixth graders in every group of about fifteen. At Northside, we have a community across all grade levels, and we think that Hawk Hill is a great way to achieve that.
Student-led conferences this year took place at the secret conference of the year. This gave the students a great opportunity to select and present evidence of their learning to their families. The artifacts they picked allowed them to reflect on their learning. Student-led conferences empower those students to take ownership for their learning.
Lunch with the Cop, being an upstander. Lunch with the Cop is a great way to build a strong and healthy community. Officers talk about partnership, the importance of safety, and how students can help stop bullying. Some upstander strategies we found are stand-up, don't join in, stop rumors, if you see something, say something, show empathy, and be a friend. We'd like to give a shout out to Officer Schneider and Chief Officer Mark White.
Chief.
Mark White.
Superstar Lunch is an award earned. Staff nominate students who shine in each theme. Each quarter, new superstars are awarded in different theme. Our fourth games this year were soaring at Northside. SOAR is S for safe, O organized, A accountable, and R respectful. Kindness and compassion, leadership, and peacemaker problem solver. Families are invited to the lunch celebration with Mr. Lyon and Mrs. Musgrove, where they will read the nominations. And students get recognized for going above and beyond standards.
Once a month, we have Hawk Time or Guidance. At Hawk Time, we learn about all lot things that help us in school and in the present. One example is when we learn about the different types of bullying and how to be an upstander. Another example is how we learn to calm down with different strategies, like the photo that shows in the zones of regulation, we may be feeling blue or sad, and then red or mad, and we learn to control those feelings through this class.
Mrs. B is our gym teacher, and she said the school feels like a family.
Natalie and Julia from fifth grade said about the community and culture of the school, that it brings us closer together. And then Foster from fifth grade also said, I love Hawk Hills. I think it's a good opportunity to have fun. Slide please.
Well, they wanted me to read the quote, so here I go. Ohana means family. Family means no one is left behind or forgotten. That quote is from Lilo and Stitch. At Northside, we are family.
Excellent job, guys. The other piece I like to celebrate with the community is the thing that really makes you Northside unique, is just like the student said, it truly is a family. It's the place where all the kids from east-west harmony consolidated and come together for the first time. So, thank you much for the opportunity to present tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon, Mrs. Musgrove, all the teachers, and all the kids that joined us tonight, and I'm assuming some parents also. Thank you for coming. We really, really enjoy that. And yes, we will pause this for a moment if you are excusing yourself.
They're up in the game, all the way up. Early in the afternoon. No. My Bernie. Same thing. we gave her just a few minutes to get her stuff rounded up. And she's next on our agenda, safety coordinator update, and in a ripped-from-the-headlines presentation, the pandemic plan.
Thanks for your patience with me so I could get those pictures. Those kids did a phenomenal job, and I said I hope I do half as well as they did. We, as a district, have a plan that's been in effect since two thousand and eight, and I think we can all agree that the world has changed greatly since two thousand and eight. So, we took the opportunity to look through the plan, make sure that it was still feasible, and update when it comes to mentions of technology or programming that we would use to connect with students during the pandemic or a possible pandemic. The document that was sent to you was built off of that template with the consultation with our district nurse Erin Cottouse, and it is a living document. And I say a living document because, as we've all been paying attention to the news, there's a lot of new information coming out every day, and we want this document to be able to respond to the information as it comes out. Our district, as are all districts in our state right now, are in a level that is called standby, which means that there has been a confirmed case in our state, and we should prepare for the next step, which could potentially be school closures. Bottom line though, a lot of the questions that we get are, what is the percentage? When do you decide to close schools? What does it take to close the schools? And frankly, we have to depend on the experts on this. We get our guidance from the Rock County Health Department, from the Wisconsin Department of Health, and from the CDC. So, if they dictate closures or cancellations, we abide by their directives. And that's not just in line with COVID, that's in line with the flu or any other communicable disease. We have expressed to teachers and to parents that our goal with this pandemic plan is to make sure everybody knows we are being cautious, we are being prepared, but above all, we are not in panic mode. The experts agree that this is a disease that can be contained at this time, and because it can be contained, the primary response seems to be isolation or quarantine if a case does come up. So, in a letter that was sent home to parents, we wanted to make them aware that that is the expected response we believe would happen if a case came up in our area. I do not want to go through this page by page with you. It is a sixty-some-page document, but if there are any questions or concerns, please do let me know. As I said, it is a living document. It is still able to be amended as needs be. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carrie. And Carrie with a C, Carrie Bradley, is next up, and we will do more exploring of school finance.
Once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about responsibility for funding public schools in Wisconsin. And I'm really excited you're here, because you were saying things that we have been talking about, and I'm in my chair trying to behave appropriately while I'm getting all excited, going, he's talking about the three-legged stool. We talked about that at our last meeting. So, anyway, thanks for letting me share my excitement. And last time, we did talk about revenue limits, and we also talked about general aides when we talk about revenue limits. So, tonight, we're going to talk about sources of revenue from the state that are available to support public schools. All right. So, if we look at our pie chart, we are looking at sources of revenue in our general fund, which is our Fund Ten, our operational fund. And as you can see, we get fifty-one percent of our revenues from the state, thirty-seven percent from local property taxes mostly. We do not get a lot of money from the federal government. And then we have another category, which is a mixture of miscellaneous items, but a big item in there is our aid transit for open enrollment in. The open enrollment in revenues would be reflected in that five percent. I have not spent much time talking about special education funding, or special education in general since we began our discussion, but I think it's important for us to take a moment to look at sources of funding to support students with disabilities that are eligible for specially-designed instructional-related services. That is what the special education fund is to account for, is that excess cost of serving students with IEPs. And you can see that federal support is thirteen percent there, state support is twenty-two percent, but locally, we are bearing the burden of sixty-five percent of the cost of special education. And as Representative Verwick had said, and made comments about funding, I think one of the things he mentioned was special education. In the last legislative session, more money was put into special education state aides for this year, and then there's an increase for next year as well, but it still maybe covers twenty-five percent of the cost. Hoping it's going to be higher next year with more money in the categorical aid program, but we shall see. So, sorry. Okay. So, there are basically three types of revenues that we get from the state. There's categorical aids, general aids, and grants. And just a reminder, in that pie chart, fifty-seven percent of our revenues come from these sources. Can you go to the next slide, please, kid? All right. So, you have seen this before. This is from the board that was, the adoption format, right? And you can see that the source codes six-ten are generally for categorical aids. Six-twenty is general aids, six-thirty is special grants, and then six-ninety is this other revenue bucket. And as I have said, no, I haven't said, the six-ninety is going to be per pupil aid. So, when you look at this, the categorical aids on the first line, that's the two-hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, are transportation aid and library aid. The general aid is going to be our equalization aid that we have talked about in controlled revenues. The special projects typically are grants like educative effectiveness. And then in the six-ninety, the biggest bucket there is per pupil aid, which started several years ago and has increased over time. If you go to the next slide, you've seen this slide before, but I am bringing it back because I just want to connect that tonight, we're talking about the right side, the general aid side of the revenue limit. And then on the right, we had talked about aids outside the revenue limit, or sources of revenues outside. And so, we are talking about that first tier of categorical state aids, and we can talk about state grants too. When I put that together, I think I was more reflecting on federal, but we're going to talk about grants as well. So, categorical aids, as I have mentioned, are Transportation, Common School Fund. There's a aid program that I think is in its second year, and that is Aid for Mental Health, which is based on increasing our expenditures on school social workers. Special education aid is a categorical aid, and then also per pupil aid. So, when we looked at those source codes before, the label on the six-ten rollups was categorical aids, okay? But per pupil. But per pupil aid is a categorical aid, and that is coded to six-ninety. So when we look at those woofer codes, they don't always work as we might anticipate based on the labels. And categorical aids, as I've said, but I'm going to say it again, they're outside the revenue limit, right? General aids are equalization aid, special adjustment, high poverty, and a tax-exempt computer and personal property aid. So the first three are all going to show up in that six-twenty when we had looked on the first sheet, so those all fall into the six-twenty's. But the tax-exempt computers and personal property is a payment that comes to us not through DPI, but through the Department of Revenue. And that is going to be in that six-ninety bucket along with the per pupil aid. And I put in this slide because you've seen it on the revenue limit worksheet, and one of the things we have talked about is how I'm trying to kind of get a little more background, so when we have our once-a-year, let's go through the worksheet together. You will have seen it in pieces, and again, you have looked at this. And line eleven then is the total of our general aids, or I'm sorry, nine-twelve. And if you look at this, twelve A, our October fifteenth aid certification. In Milton, that is all equalization aid. We do not get special adjustment here. We are still in the formula, so we're getting equalization aid. On the next slide, I just have an example of a couple of grants. One thing to keep in mind is that not all of the money we get from the state comes through the Department of Public Instruction. And an example of that is the safety grant that we got last year came through the Department of Justice. So just keep in mind that sometimes we get aids that don't come through the Department of Public Instruction. I think we also had received a career and tech ed incentive grant and assessment of reading readiness, and those were through DPI. All right, so takeaway time, this is a fast one. As we go, what I want you, important things to remember is that we have general aids and equalization aid, and they equalize our tax base and our controlled revenues. Categorical aids typically are for a targeted purpose, and they may be prorated. For example, special education aid, as I had mentioned, is prorated. And so you have eligible costs based mostly around salaries, benefits, and specialized transportation for staff that serve students with IEPs. And we make our claim, and there isn't enough money in the pot to reimburse us at a hundred percent, so that aid is prorated. Transportation aid is based on the number of children and the mileage that they ride the bus. And that is, right now, I believe that one is fully funded, so they're not prorating. And then the other thing to remember is that grants are typically for targeted purposes. And a lot of times with grants, you spend a dollar and then you get a reimbursement for that dollar. That's a typical pattern with grants. So that's it for the high-level takeaways. Not on my paper here is to remember that just because the legislature calls something a grant, it doesn't mean it's a grant, it may actually be an aid. So, and categorical aids that are usually for specific purposes, we have per pupil aid, which we can use for anything. So I think the reason it was a categorical aid is because it's outside the revenue limit. So some of the historical vocabulary kind of doesn't fit the pattern as we move forward because I think there's just been different needs, and things have been modified to meet current needs rather than historical needs. All right, so next time, we are going to talk about state equalization aid. And as I recall, some of you have said there were hours of presentations available on equalization aid, all right? But we're going to try and do it in fifteen minutes next time. So it's a challenge, and I'm working hard to meet the expectations. But I think in fifteen minutes, we can just talk about fundamentally, what is the purpose of equalization aid? And then where Milton is in the formula, so that you will all know to advocate that you want money in the equalization aid formula. Milton wants money in the aid formula, okay? Or not, after my presentation, y'all can decide on your own. But we are a district that does well when the state works towards that two-thirds commitment. So, do you have any questions?
I do. I don't know so much what you talked here, but I want to try and understand Fund Eighty a little more. I know there's no state aid in it, but like, if you're doing something on Schubert Park, that's got to be a Fund Eighty. Is there any limits to how much you can spend there, or like on Fund Eighty? Just for example, like if we bought down where the tennis courts were and we put that in Fund Eighty, can you just fix that and spend that money, or does it have to be under some kind of cap?
Okay, so Fund Eighty has a unique set of rules.
Right.
There is not a spending cap. Be aware that Fund Eighty costs are supported through tax levy and user fees. Those are our two sources. They're not payable. And what we would need to talk about is whether or not an expenditure is a school expenditure or a community program expenditure. And in Milton, we have Schubert Park, which is a community park that we occasionally use for school purposes. So we would need to do an analysis to make sure that our expenditures are eligible. And so from what I have found here, we had conversations with DPI about Schubert Park, and it is determined that it is a community park, and it's not there for school operations. So if we wanted to pick another site, that site would have to be really for community purposes, not school purposes. And so that's, that's
More my question is
That's the key piece.
I just want to know, like, Schubert Park, you know, if you wanted to spend a whole lot updating the pavilion or something, you can just do it.
Well, it is up to the Board of Education to determine how much they're willing to levy for support, right? And so I think from what I have seen in my brief time here, there are commitments that have been made to sustaining the community park and to improving the community park. But we haven't taken on significant tax levy burden because of it, I guess, is maybe how I would phrase that with my understanding of what's happened.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Very good, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us up to referendum. And in our ongoing update there, I'll invite Mr. Huffman up to the podium and share with us the state of the art, state of the project, I should say.
Okay, great. Well, as Brian mentioned earlier, it's the first day of track practice today, so pardon my casual dress because I am a track coach. So a little bit of a construction update, if you've been by east, you see that the roof joist and roof decking is going on. Over at west, they're finishing the load-bearing masonry walls. And that will follow next week with roof joist and decking, so good progress there. Good to be under a little bit of shelter for the rest of the construction. Out at Harmony, that's of course behind, and it's just at the slab-on-grade, casting the slab-on-grade. And that'll be followed by the masonry walls there. Quite a bit of activity administratively on the project. So tomorrow is bid day for the middle school. If you'll recall, that's about just a little bit less than eight million dollars worth of project scope that we'll be receiving bids for tomorrow. So it'll be a very active day at JP Cullen's office. I know Steve Clavon will be there watching the bids come in. I believe Stephen Chaunce is planning his day around that tomorrow as well. So I think all indications are that we've hit a pretty good bid climate. We've seen quite a bit of interest, there's been quite a bit of conversations about the project. We had good participation in the walkthroughs, so I think tomorrow could be a very good bid day for the middle school. Later this week, on Wednesday, our furniture fixtures and equipment procurement process has gotten to the point where they can actually put the dollars to all the designs that they've done. So that's certainly a key time when we look at that and make sure we're applying those dollars appropriately. And then we'll be back to you. There is a need to get some of the purchases actually underway in order to meet the elementary school timelines. So more on that to come. And then finally, at the high school, the construction documents were completed and issued last Friday. So JP Cullen will be putting those together into the appropriate bid packages, defining the scopes of work. And bids will be due on April seventh for that. Any questions on either the progress or the administrative aspects before we jump to tonight's action item? Okay, so as you will recall, Cullen, JP Cullen came with a strategy to get out ahead of the schedule on the high school side with the STEM wing. And they requested that we peel out the excavation portion of that project and do it and design it as an early bid package. So that was approved, they went forward with that, and bids were received. And we did experience a favorable bid day on that. And as is noted in your board packet, close to three-hundred thousand dollars below the estimated cost for that. So that was hopefully something that we'll see again tomorrow. But today, we're asking for your approval to allow Superintendent Rich to sign the notice to proceed. That is also included in your board packet. And I'm happy to take any questions on that.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to send the notice for JP Cullen to proceed into the high school early work package.
I'll second it. Thank you. Motion from Karen, seconded by Mike, as you just heard, to authorize us to proceed with our early work package. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, will vote that, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? For early work?
Great, thank you. And just a reminder that that, those dollars will later be incorporated into the guaranteed maximum price that is established for the high school. So placeholder for now, later it becomes a part of the whole GMP. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Huffman. Okay, new business, Rich is making his way to the podium. We are on letter A is twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, four-K program changes.
Yeah, I wanted to give the board and the community an update on some changes that we're moving forward with, with our four-K program. This current year, we have six sections of four-K, we're anticipating having six sections again next year. Right now, one of those sections is at West Elementary, and the other five are in space that we lease at Small Wonders. And we've spent the last few weeks kind of talking about different options. And we're excited to say that starting with this upcoming school year in September, we're going to move the four-K programs back into our elementary schools. As I mentioned, we'll still have six sections, but we'll have two of those at Harmony Elementary, two sections at Milton East, and two sections at Milton West. We're really looking forward to that. I'll highlight some of the reasons for that change. And there isn't space to have a four-K classroom at Consolidated, so we won't be able to have one there. But it would be great to have two sections at our other three elementary schools. To highlight some of the advantages to that change, it really will create a more seamless transition for students. Right now, for those five classrooms that are off-site, that's the first year for students. But then they have another transition to kindergarten in a new site. It takes a little while for students to get used to that building. So by offering four-K at Harmony, at East, and at West, it allows students to start their schooling there, and it will make that transition to kindergarten much more smooth, both for students and for families. Many of our four-K students have older siblings that are at our elementary schools in kindergarten through third grade. So it provides families with one less transition and helps out that way. It will allow our current four-K teachers and staff to relocate with the students into those schools. So it won't be any reduction in staff, it'll just be moving those staff who currently are working off-site. It'll move them into our elementary schools, make it a little bit easier for collaboration with their kindergarten-through-third-grade peers. It'll really also help with the effectiveness and efficiency of our district resources because we'll have better access to the support services that are available at Harmony and at Milton East and at Milton West. And finally, it reduces the need for the district to lease any of that classroom space. It's a considerable cost to pay for that leased space. And so one of the things that we've been working on with the elementary principals is whether we have the space capability to move students in. We looked at the new floor plans with the additions to our elementary schools, and we really do feel like this is a perfect time to make this change. As we're transitioning into the additional space in our elementary schools, we'll be able to utilize two classrooms. The four-K rooms won't necessarily be in the new space. The principals are working on where's the best location for those elementary, or for those four-K classrooms that'll put them close to restrooms, fairly close to entrances, because parents will be coming and going, picking up kids and dropping them off. And keeps those two four-K teachers at each of the schools next to each other so that they'll be able to work real well together. So we really feel that with our projected enrollment remaining stable over the next four to five years, that we still would have space for some growth in those elementary schools. But we really feel like this will be a kind of a win-win for us, both financially and to best meet our academic needs for our students. So we're excited to be moving forward, and we'll be working with the teachers and other staff and the elementary principals on how to make sure that when the school year starts in early September, that we're all ready to go with that transition. We will be communicating with families in June, in early June, when we send out report cards around that time, communicating with families about which of those schools their four-K student will be located. And it'll tie into when we send out the information for kindergarten-through-third graders too. So any questions or thoughts from the board?
Because my business, do it's ours, our transportation budget bill.
There's going to be, there will be some changes to transportation. We still, we provide transportation for all four-K students. It will decrease the need for some of our transfers. Right now, we're running some buses from our elementary schools to four-K at Small Wonders. We will, it'll, the final amount of transportation change is really going to be dependent on where those four-K kids live and how it ties into the other route. So we're not certain what the, what the end result will be, but I think there's some gain and some loss. And we'll be bringing kids to the schools where we're already delivering the buses. But we'll have to look at how all of that plays out before we know what the exact change will be.
Thank you.
I have a question, Rich. Is it, I'm doing the math in my head here, if we have ten sections at a grade level, and I think that's a fair average through our elementaries and intermediates, and we have six sections of four-K, is that, is it fair to assume that sixty percent of our eventual students participate in our four-K program roughly?
That's been fairly standard over the years, Jen, you probably know the history of that a little bit better.
Is it fair to make that generalization, or is that too?
I mean, about fifty students from four-K to K.
Okay.
And on average, that's what the trend is then.
Do you guys that look at this, do you think that putting the four-Ks in our elementary buildings would encourage more kids to participate than are now?
Yeah, and especially in the areas that aren't as close. And the people that live here in the city of Milton, the transportation to Small Wonders is fairly close. But in our, especially down in the Harmony But in our, especially down in the Harmony area, I think it'll give parents an option that's much closer to where they live.
In July at 6:00, it's really 12:00.
Oh, two times. Gotcha. That's what I was trying to logic out.
Yeah, that's a good...
When you said, "We only gained 50 kids," I'm like, "Well, that doesn't..." Now I, now I got you.
No, that's a good clarification. The sections are smaller at 4K than they are in kindergarten. But it is 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM sections.
Yep, exactly, gotcha. Very good. Anybody else?
What are we currently paying for...
We, there's a couple of different pieces to the costs. There's the, we pay a certain amount per student, and then there's an additional lease charge. But then we also have some facilities costs. We have a custodian that's there part of the time, and we'll be able to transfer that staff member. We'll still utilize that staff member, but use him in our, in our other buildings. The cost is right in, a little bit over $150,000 a year. So there is a pretty significant cost savings to make in this change.
Any other questions? I think we're good.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Billhorne, I believe you're on deck. Item B is discussion and possible action on early college credit program, ECCP, and Start College Now applications for 2020, 2021.
Yes, and your packet are the fall applications. March 1st was the deadline for any student who is choosing to take... This is, again, the former youth options. Start College Now are those students who wishing to take up to 18 credits at a Wisconsin Technical College. And they split that apart, the early college credit programs for those wanting to take courses at the UW program. Students can take up to 18 credits of the course of a high school career. And as per state statute and board policy, it comes to the board, we present the request to you every spring and every fall. So we have 18 students looking to take classes at BTC, and then nine students looking to go into the UW program, most of that being UW Whitewater. There's actually some online programs through UW-Madison as well. Just a point of reference as well, and I think I say this every time, not, just because students request this doesn't mean that it actually falls into their schedule. About a third of them actually end up taking those courses. But they have to submit it, and then they try, they apply, and they look to see what the schedules are this summer when they actually apply for the courses.
It's an action item for us, folks.
Go ahead, Dan.
I make a motion, we accept the early college credit program applicants as well as the Start College Now applications as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Tom, seconded by Karen, to approve the early college credit and Start College Now apps that you just heard about. Any questions on that?
Is, just a quick one for Jeremy. Is there more, since Blackhawk Tech is so close, is there a lot more than there used to be when they had to go a long ways to go, or no?
You know what, yes, I actually have seen that. We have a number of students, actually, they've opened up some more sections at the CNA. But also with the, but that's actually at Central Campus. The welding courses, they've also redone, you see a lot of .25 credits in there. They've completely redone those programs to make it all more accessible for those wishing to go in, which is a good thing. But a lot of it is, you get to go in, they have open shop time, where you can go and you can check off the skills. It's a lot of the instructions online, and you can go on in your own time. So it actually makes it more accessible to anyone, which is a positive. And also, many of our students are beginning to use that flexibility as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Hamel is next. Up for discussion and possible action on the girls' hockey co-op.
Correct, this is our third and, right now, as far as I know, final co-op that I'll bring to you this year. The reason I brought these at this time for next year's winter, they're due April 1st. On April 2nd, they won't accept anything at the WIA. So this is our girls' co-op. We've been in it, this might be our sixth, seventh year, I believe, with the girls. We did this first before we did boys' hockey. And you can see all the schools that are listed there. Southern Wisconsin, a couple of Northern Illinois. One thing I think could be interesting for you to know, in case you're ever asked, in boys' hockey, we charge a $600 hockey fee for our boys, plus the $50 athletic fee that everybody pays to play a sport. For girls' hockey, we charge a $50 athletic fee for the girls, and then we pay our share per athlete. And the reason being is, it's way cheaper for us to pay for a couple, two, three, four kids per kid than it is to host an entire program. The boys' program is much more expensive, so we are charging a fee, which is very common for, for hockey programs to charge a large fee. The girls', each school does it a little bit differently as far as the amount of support. It costs about $1,000 to maybe $1,200 per year per player. This year, we had one. A few years ago, we had seven or eight. Next year, we anticipate having two, and the following year, two more, which if they all stay out, it'd be four for a couple of years. And there's pretty good girls' numbers coming in youth hockey right now that are Milton students. And we like to keep them as Milton students, and they still get the opportunity to play hockey. Any questions?
I make a motion, we accept the girls' hockey co-op program as presented.
Okay.
You guys can make motions, too. You realize that, right?
Motion from Tom, seconded by Karen, to approve our hockey co-op, as you heard. Any other questions? Otherwise, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. I'll just require the board and the clerk signature, so I'll get that to Kim to get that last signature.
Okay, miscellaneous, action on staffing reports, which you have in front of you.
I'll have a motion to approve staffing reports.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Brian, to approve our staffing report. Are there any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, right-hand end of the table. Gibson donations.
I'd like to make a motion to approve $2,432 with gratitude from the people of Milton. They are very generous.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Rick, to approve our Gibson donations for $2,432. All in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And just on that topic, one quick thing that I wanted to add. We did receive, the board had heard earlier about the Friends of Milton Pool doing some fundraising for the naming of the pool and for the signage for that. And we have received a donation from them for a portion of that, and they're going to continue to do some fundraising for the rest. And I wanted to recognize that, because we didn't include it here. That'll be included in, in April's...
Future list.
List, yep.
Gotcha. Very good. Meeting dates, Mr. Diamond, what's on our agenda?
We have coming up on Monday, March 16th, one week from today, a joint meeting with, between the School District of Milton School Board and the City of Milton. That'll be at the District Office PDC, and that starts at 6:30. The purpose of that joint meeting with the school board will be to have discussion and possible action on moving forward with a sister city between the City of Milton and International City, and then the school district will be part of that. On March 23rd through 27th is spring break. We need to schedule a, a couple HR committee meetings, one before spring break, if possible, and one the week after spring break. We have coming up the spring election for school board on April 7th, and then the regular school board meeting, as you recall in March, because of spring break, we just have the one regular school board meeting. So our next regular school board meeting will be here at 6:30 on April 13. So we need two HR committee meetings. And on the side, we also have a policy committee meeting. All right, we have to confirm, confirm the date on that and the time on the policy committee. I'll get hold of Diamond.
I was just saying, you better loop her in to see what you want to do for dates.
Possibly, maybe we can do it on the 16th, at least one of them on the 16th. Mike is at work, possibly, prior to the meeting with the joint meeting in the city and...
Yes.
It's the joint meeting.
Yeah, that'd be good, Mike.
And, if I may, we also have to set up negotiations with the union, and ideally, the week of April 13th has one more HR committee meeting, so a total of three.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get with Diamond.
Okay.
And see how that...
See what she's got available. Any other meetings we got to get thought about?
No, that's it.
And as I'm fond of saying, I've exhausted my agenda.
Make a motion, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Brian, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See you next time.